I'd like to call the order to meeting the village board for April 29th, 2025. Would you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's five.
This time we move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, there's Mr. Yus- Yusuf. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see your name.
Ahmad?
Ahmad.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Yusuf. I am here to hopefully clear a few misconceptions in hopes of us becoming less divided than we are today. The phrase I started my speech with, salaam alaikum, is an Islamic greeting which means peace be upon you. You might be surprised to find that Jesus, peace be upon him, also said to, also said this to his disciples, as mentioned in Gospel of Luke, chapter 24, verse 36. Some of you might think that Islam is a relatively new religion that was created by Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, 1400 years ago. Actually, Islam, which means to submit and to surrender your will to God, was there since the time man set foot on this earth. Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, did not create Islam, but was the last and final messenger. Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, said that there were 124,000 prophets that were sent on the face of this earth. All of the prophets that were previously sent, like Prophet Noah, Abraham, Moses, Jesus, peace be upon them all, were sent only for their people and their message as a whole was meant to be followed only for that specific time period. Since Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, was the last and final messenger, he was sent as a mercy to all of the worlds. It is mentioned in the Holy Quran in Surat Al Anbiya, chapter 21, verse 107. "We have not sent you except as a mercy to all the worlds." It is also mentioned in the Holy Quran in Surat Sabah, chapter 34, verse 28. "We did not send you for all mankind except to bring them glad tidings and to warn, but most people do not know." Some of you might think that God of the Muslims is a different God because Muslims say that their God is Allah. Well, if you look in the Arabic Bible, used by over 10 million Arab Jews and Christians, you will find that the word God in English is translated to the word Allah in many places in the Bible. For example, it is mentioned in the Old Testament, in the book of Genesis, chapter 1, verse 1. "In the beginning Allah created the heaven and the earth." I end with the following verse from the Holy Quran that answers the question, who is our creator and God, Allah? It is mentioned in Surat Al Ikhlas, chapter 112, verse 1 to 4, where Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, says, "Say he is Allah, the one and unique. Allah, the absolute, the eternal, who is in need of none and of whom all are in need. He neither begat nor was he begotten, and there is none comparable to him." Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Good evening. Chris McCullough, resident 829 Brentwood Drive. Trustees, I know you do not generally ask questions, but I have some questions you should be asking about the resolution to authorize the village manager to enter into an agreement for unpaid red light ticket collection services with Municipal Collection Services LLC. Based on this staff report, I understand that this is the only authorized collection agency in Illinois that we can utilize. The staff report further notes the budget impact cannot be predicted as the number of unpaid red light ticket payments required to engage the service of the collection agency for payment recovery is currently unknown. My questions are, why don't we know how many unpaid tickets exist or the total potential revenue from those tickets? Does the village pay a fee or is the fee a percentage of revenue collected? What percent of revenue collected will go to the village, collection agency, and Redspeed? Did you know, in May of 2023, the General Assembly passed a bill regulating vendor-provided automatic traffic system contributions to political officials? State and local political officials cannot, cannot accept contributions from businesses that provide automatic traffic enforcement technology. This ethics reform law was passed because federal investigators caught public officials in bribery, deals, and kickbacks, kickback schemes throughout Chicagoland. That law didn't matter to Redspeed. That law didn't matter to Frank D. Simone, as his committee accepted a campaign contribution in July of 2023 in the amount of $1,500 from Redspeed. This was after the bill was passed. Redspeed has contributed $7,000 to Friends for Frank D. Simone since April 202018. Thank you.
This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March 25th, 2025 village board meeting?
We have a motion.
Clear a second.
Second.
Any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries minutes are approved. Next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $3,366,576.39. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Clear a second.
Second.
Any discussions on the warrant? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and warrants approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. One, an ordinance of the village of Bensonville DuPage in Cook County, Illinois, amending section 8-7-7 of chapter 7 of Title 8 of the Bensonville Village Code with regard to water and sewer rates. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? You have a motion? Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion, Joe?
I can take it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah. The DuPage Water Commission raised their rates that they charged the village of Bensonville for the water that we purchase from them, so we're just using this as a pass through to, only for the amount that they've increased it.
Okay. Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries ordinance is passed. Two, is resolution authorizing the village manager enter an agreement for unpaid red light ticket collection services with Municipal Collection Services LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion?
This is the, the statement that Mr. McCullough made. This is our red light ticket. And those tickets that aren't paid, we send to collections. There was only two companies in Illinois that were certified to do the collections. We were under contract with one of them and they're, they're not going to do this anymore. So we went to the other, the only other option we had, and we signed a contract with them. And this was negotiated by our finance director, Lisa Banavitz, who's on vacation. So she's asked that we accept this other company, which is the only other choice we had.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Three, resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the village's application service provider agreement with Tyler Technologies to extend the Munis software system through April 30th of 2026 in amount not to exceed $142,000. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Munis is the software that our finance department uses for accounts payable and accounts receivable. It's literally the backbone of our finance operation. Uh, it's been working well for us and we've made a number of enhancements. This is the contract to extend it for one additional year.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Four, is resolution approving a service agreement with Constellation Energy Services Incorporated for the village of Bensonville Commonwealth Edison accounts. Is there a motion to approve? You have a motion? Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
For about the last 10 years, we've been using an aggregate person to buy our electricity for the village of Bensonville that we use for all of our buildings. We get a better rate than ComEd is able to provide for us, so we negotiated this contract with them and the rate came in very favorable. So we're recommending that we go back with Constellation Energy for the purchase of our electricity this year.
Any questions from our board?
Sounds good.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Five, resolution granting the advice and consent to the president's reappearance of P. Joseph Montana as the village ethics officer. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Joe Montana and his firm have provided service for the village for the last 10 years and they've done an outstanding exemplary job and we would recommend that we retain them again and appoint Joe as our ethics officer.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Six, is resolution granting the vice and consent of the village board of trustees to the village president's reappearance of Joseph Karachi to the office of village engineer. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Clear a second.
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 Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Pretty much the same story. This is a presidential appointment. Uh, Joe Karachi is the director of public works and does a great job for us and we, the staff would recommend that he be reappointed as the village's engineer.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Seven is resolution granting the advice and consent to the village board of trustees to the village president's reappearance of Lisa Banavitz as village treasurer. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
The village has to name a village treasurer and Lisa Banavitz is our finance director, so she's the logical person to assume this role and has been appointed as such. We would recommend that it be approved.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Eight is resolution granting the vice and consent to the village's president's reappearance of Jim Brill to the police pension board. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Clear a second.
Second.
There being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
The police pension board is an independent board that approves pensions for police officers if they're hurt in the line of duty or retire, and Jim Brill has been appointed to represent a position on that board.
Questions from our board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Nine is resolution granting the vice and consent of village board of trustees to the village president's reappearance of Milton Mercado to the board of police and fire commission. Is there a motion to approve? You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
The board of police commissioners are the ones, our independent board, that hire the police officers that come to Bensonville and do the background and psychological review all the data and then recommend them for hire. Uh, Milton Mercado has been serving on the board since one of the members passed away and he's up for reappointment.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Moving on to community and economic development, ordinance granting variations to construct a new warehouse development at 1100 Tower Lane. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Um, Morgan Harbor for 1100 Tower Lane. We had the CDC case approximately, um, one and a half years ago. They made a couple of minor changes, so we had to come back to CDC. Everything was approved, so we're all good to go.
So it was approved 6-0?
Yes.
It's gonna be a warehouse where the old, uh, yeah, office building complex is, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance granting amendment to a plan needed development regarding special use permit motor vehicle repair and service at 904 West Irving Park Road. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. What's the, do we have discussion?
We have Jem's Car Wash. They currently have a car wash at, um, I can't remember the address.
904 West Irving?
Thank you, 904 West Irving. And he wants to, um, expand his business to do some light automotive repair. He currently, um, he has the triple catch. He's got the four bays. The CDC approved this.
Is it just oil changes and brakes?
Yeah, and just, you know, minor repair. Uh, John, the owner from, uh, Jem is here if, uh...
What kind of repairs, John?
Uh, like, uh, he said, uh, suspension by like minor suspension work, brakes, uh, alternators, nothing, no engine, no transmission, no...
Any questions from our board?
Are the hours gonna be the same as the, as the car wash or they need different hours than the...
Same, same hours.
Same hours?
Yep.
Any other questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Ordinance is passed. Three is ordinance approving a preliminary and final plat of consolidation at 600 to 700 Devon. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yes, this is, um, three parcels that, that are gonna make up the 600 to 700. It's just a formality to bring them all into one parcel.
And is there plans for this parcel or we don't have those yet?
Uh, we do have a warehouse currently going up, but I do not believe we have a tenant as of yet. Is that correct, Mark?
We have one LLI brand.
Oh, good. Okay.
At first, it's not perspective.
Okay. So that's good.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Resolution declaring 340 North Meyer as surplus property. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
So this was previously approved quite a few years ago. Um, we've got some renewed interest in the property, so we went out and got a couple more, um, um, appraisals. So at this point in time, we need to, um, reconsider to make it surplus property.
We have to declare surplus before we can sell it and we have to get an appraisal before that, correct?
Yes.
Who's the, uh, interest from?
Um, actually from the parties to the north and to the south.
They both wanna expand?
Uh, one wants to make a parking lot. I think the other one wants to expand.
And it goes to bid, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution approved. Five is resolution approving a facade improvement grant application at 1045 South York. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
So the facade improvement is for, there's currently shutters, uh, security shutters on, on the outside of the building. We're asking the, uh, the liquor store to put them on the inside of the building. We, we have two different prices from them. Um, he's agreed to the 50-50 program, so we'll, uh, turn that over to finance for final determination as to what it will actually cost.
It's because we don't allow rolled shutters on the outside, correct?
That's correct, sir. Yes.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. So we have a proclamation, I don't have a proclamation in front of me. So proclamation declaring May 7th, 2025 Arbor Day in the village of Bensonville. Would the deputy clerk please read the proclamation?
Official proclamation, Tree City, USA. Whereas in 1872 in Nebraska, Board of Agriculturalists established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Frank D. Simone, village president of the village of Bensonville, does hereby proclaim May 7th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the village of Bensonville, and he urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
Is there a motion in support of this proclamation?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
There being a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, so I'd just like to officially, um, I'll say, the official Arbor Day was actually April 25th, so the village of Bensonville is going to hold their Arbor Day celebration on May 6th, uh, I'm sorry, May 7th. We have two actual ceremonies that we're going to have, um, both at our elementary schools. Um, at 9:30 in the morning, we'll plant a tree at Tioga Elementary School, and at 2:00 in the afternoon, we'll plant one at Johnson School. So, um, two trees will be planted this year. I also wanna acknowledge the eight streets and forestry professionals that work for the Public Works Department. Uh, their job really is to main contain our over 5,700 Parkway urban forest trees. Uh, just wanna give them some kudos for the work that they do out there every single day.
Any other questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Two is ordinance designating certain property as surplus and authorizing the disposal of the same. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Joe, what are we getting rid of?
So, uh, this ordinance identifies six vehicles that are no longer in use and needed for the village operations, as well as 53 pieces of technologies. These are laptops, desktops, monitors, copiers, printers, things of that nature. Uh, we've been, uh, replacing some of our outdated, uh, technology over the last six months. Uh, so these are the pieces that we are replacing. These assets will be disposed of in the most economical and environmentally friendly manner.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries. Ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance of the village of Bensonville DuPage in Cook County, Illinois, establishing the South Industrial Special Service Area in the village of Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Clear a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, so back in December of 2024, the village board adopted ordinance number 71-2024. This was proposing the establishment of this SSA in front of you tonight. Um, we've had public hearings since then and informed the property owners of the process and Um, we've had public hearings since then and informed the property owners of the process and the impacts of the SSA. To date, no objections were filed with the village clerk. This is within the 60-day filing period, uh, so there was no objection to the creation of the SSA or the proposed tax increase on the special service area. The SSA is being established to pay for roadway and infrastructure improvements in the South Business District, which includes Entry Drive, William Street, Judson Street, James Street and Bernice Drive up to Ferrari Drive. Uh, the SSA that's in front of you establishes the guidelines and the limits on what we can collect in the form of funding to help pay for this project. It's the village's intent to split this project 50/50 with the property owners in the area. Uh, the village is gonna be investing, uh, some of our CIP money as well as a DCEO grant that we received for, uh, resurfacing within the village. Um, we've decided to push the project out to 2026. Um, this was a decision made in-house just to try to alleviate some of the pain on the businesses and the property owners out there. Um, if we started it, if we bid it out and started it now, it would probably go through the winter season and into next season. So, I believe that we can finish this project in one construction season and not put them through two different years of construction. So, we're gonna push this off to very early next year. It'll be a full, probably seven months of construction. So, we've, we've notified some of the residents and the business owners of this change, um, and it's our recommendation to approve this ordinance.
Any questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries an ordinance is passed. Four is a resolution authorizing execution of a purchase order with Westside Tractor Sales for the purchase of a John Deere excavator and trailer in the amount of $199,989.19. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, Joe, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so the village currently owns and maintains two backhoes, uh, that are used for a number of different tasks within, within Public Works. Uh, one of those backhoes is, uh, now over 25 years old and has exceeded its useful life. Uh, so, Public Works has identified and budgeted for the replacement of this vehicle in the CY25 budget. Uh, we researched and tested three different manufacturers of excavators. We're looking to change over to an excavator for this purchase instead of a backhoe. Feel that having one of each is gonna provide us a lot more flexibility in some of the things that we get to do in Public Works. Uh, this excavator will allow us to get into tighter corners for water main breaks and things of that nature while keeping the backhoe for a lot of our forestry-related items and things like that. Uh, so, we identified the John Deere as the best of the three, uh, excavators that we, uh, demoed. Those were John Deere, Bobcat and Caterpillar. Uh, this, uh, this machine is available through the local John Deere vendor, Westside Tractor, as part of a Sourcewell joint purchase. Um, so, we're gonna look at replacing this, uh, with the John Deere excavator. Uh, the total cost for the machine, attachments, trailer, we did get a loyalty discount from Westside Tractor as well as the trade-in of one of the six vehicles that we just declared surplus. The total cost is gonna be just under $200,000 at $199,989.19. So, it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Questions from our board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing the execution of a three-year fire hydrant painting contract with Go Painters Incorporated in the amount of $121,480. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so the village has over a thousand fire hydrants within our, our water collection system, our distribution system. Um, one of our responsibilities is to keep these looking good, maintained by painting them every so often. Last time we painted these was nearly seven years ago. Uh, so, we're looking to do a three-year contract with a contractor to paint these over a three-year period. So, we'll do one-third of the town, one-third of the town and one-third of the town. Um, the village partnered with La Grange Park and put out a joint purchase for, uh, or a joint proposal for this project. Again, it is a three-year sandblasting and painting contract. Bids were open on April 9th with Go Painters submitting the only bid in the amount of $121,480. Uh, to ensure competitive pricing, staff did review the fire hydrant, sandblasting and painting bid with similar scope ones from other communities, um, as well as our previous one. It actually came in just about the same price as our previous one seven years ago. And it is a little bit cheaper than a recently joint bid project with, uh, the village of Lombard. So, we were very happy with the pricing. We feel it is competitive with what we've seen in the industry and staff does recommend approval of this three-year contract.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing execution of change order number one with Aqua Contractors Corporation for the Addison Creek Storm Sewer Phase Two Improvement for an increase of $189,606.62 for a revised contract amount of $2,679,606.62. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
So, this is a project that we completed last year. Um, we're still going through some of the negotiations of some of the extras that were involved with the project. This was a very difficult project for us. The, the soils on this job, um, were not the best. Um, the, the project was a storm sewer, uh, project that was phase two. We stopped in 2023 at the back of the Bridgeway, um, complex. This project was gonna take us from that spot in the alley behind the complex all the way around through Sunset Park and over to Jefferson Street down Marion. Uh, the soils on Marion were awful, uh, as they were digging. Typically, you're hoping for some nice clay soil. Um, there was a lot of sand in that soil. The excavation, uh, was just getting bigger and bigger every time we dug down. So, we're digging down 15 to 20 feet, huge box culverts. It was just a challenge just to keep our water main and our sanitary sewer intact. Uh, we did lose some of the sanitary sewer, had to replace it, so that's part of what this change order is, is some of the extra work that was required, um, just to make sure that our systems were still in place. Um, the change order here is in the amount of $189,606. We are still negotiating on a couple of remaining items with the contractor. Expect to bring back another change order, a final change order to you probably in the next month or two. Um, but this change order number one will allow us to pay the contractor for work that they have performed. Uh, the new contract price is just over $2.67 million. Um, it's staff's recommendation to approve this change order number one.
Questions from our board?
Yeah, how much more work is anticipated?
So, the work is complete. Um, the only thing we have to do really is, uh, just some punch list items. Um, there is some pavement issues that we have out there. I have feeling we're gonna be pulling up some of the pavement and putting some new pavement down. It's not draining properly, uh, but we'll hold them accountable for that as well. Um, the remaining of the work just has to do with some of the dewatering. We're back and forth with them right now on some of the bills and rentals for some of the dewatering that was required because of the depth of the excavation. We didn't anticipate that. I would anticipate we're gonna have about another $90,000 to $100,000 worth of work, of, of payment on this project.
Any other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Seven is resolution authorizing a purchase order to Tide Wall Roofing and Sheet Metal of Elk Grove Village for purchase and installation of roof coating on Public Works in a non-sixteen amount of $126,710. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
There being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so the public works facility has a 38,000 square foot galvanized flat roof. Um, it's original to the building. Um, it has been showing signs of compromise in the last few winters. It is leaking. We've done our best to patch it as much as we can. Um, staff has done a significant amount of research on looking into an alternative, um, roof product, um, similar to what we did at the Edge Two facility a couple of years ago. Uh, we're looking to put in a Karnak 502 elasticoat white 10-year roof system. That was very hard for me to say. Um, but, uh, this system is going to provide us with at least another 10-year of guaranteed life on the roof. It is a coating membrane that we put on the roof, um, that will seal up all the joints, uh, eliminate a lot of the joints. And, um, staff is recommending the approval of this contract. The cost of it is $126,710. We did competitively bid this one, um, with Tide Wall coming in at the low price. They are the contractor that also did the Edge Two product that is, uh, holding up very well for us.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Penicola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries resolution is approved. Eight is resolution authorizing execution of an engineering services agreement with Hay and Associates Incorporated for the Addison Creek Stabilization Phase One project in the not exceeding amount of $50,000. Is there a, uh, motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so the village has been working with Hay and Associates on, um, future improvements to the Addison Creek. We have three tributaries that all come together and, uh, the last in the, in the southernmost portion runs through the Old Legends property where the two new domes are and the hotel complex. Over the years, this creek has been reduced in size due to sediment, um, reducing its overall effectiveness. Creek banks were showing size of deterioration, the vegetation along the banks was horrible. Uh, we just completed a vegetation removal contract out there. Um, if you haven't been out there, I'd really suggest you do go out there. Um, it is much improved and it looks completely different with all the vegetation gone. Um, the creek is actually pretty wide, it's flowing fairly well. There's a few stoppages in there with a couple of beaver dams and things that we're taking care of. Um, but our next phase is going to be, uh, enter into an engineering agreement, um, with Hay and Associates, another engineering agreement, to kinda work out the details. Are gonna be doing some survey out there, coming up with some improvements. Again, our plan is to have a, more of a recreational boardwalk, walking path along the creek that can be enjoyed by those coming to visit either the hotels, the, the domes or what have you. Um, so, this contract, we've negotiated down to $50,000 to, again, do the survey, provide some improvements and some concepts on how we want to improve that property, uh, bring those concepts to the board for, uh, their take on it. And then, we would enter into a final engineering agreement to do the physical design of the contract before construction. So, it's staff's recommended, recommendation to approve this $50,000 contract to get us to the next level.
Any questions from the board?
I will say, Joe, looks, uh, pretty good over there.
It's different.
Very different, yeah.
Oh, and I might mention, this is also gonna be, um, using some of the TIF four funding as well, so this is not a taxpayer, um, cost.
Even better. Even better job. Good job.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.